I'm a project manager from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division. I am the project manager for the Sumner Centennial Project and we are beginning the design public hearing. I'd like to introduce a few members who will be speaking tonight. Chris Kivior is from our Legislative and Public Affairs Office. In a minute, he'll be explaining some of the ground rules, but before he does that, I'd like to introduce two interpreters. Susanna is our Spanish interpreter.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Susana Carella y estoy aquí para interpretarles en español.
Thank you, Susanna. And Nadie is our Arabic interpreter.
My name is Nadie Burgess. I'm Arabic interpreter with ATB.
And Chris, can you explain a little bit of the ground rules for operating the platform?
Sure. Let me just, while we're on interpretation, if you do need the interpretation function, if you could click that button, button at the bottom of your toolbar. And Susanna, if you wouldn't mind translating that quick, followed by you, Nadie, and then we will begin the, begin the interpretation.
Absolutely. Señores, si necesitan interpretación en español, por favor, oprima ese botón en la parte inferior de la pantalla.
Thank you. Nadie?
This project, there's never a good time to do a project like this. Major rehabilitation on such important this for any length of time. We had considered doing this around 2016 and 2017, but there are other projects ongoing. And you can only disrupt so much at a time. At that time, the MBTA blue line upgrades were occurring between the airport and the Chelsey curves were undergoing rehabilitation. The North Washington Street Bridge was beginning construction. The Tobin Bus Lane and Silver Line improvements. So as those have progressed, next slide, please. If those have progressed, it allowed us time to do this work. We also have looked at projects throughout Eastern Massachusetts. We've developed a heat map with the northern corridor, which is where we are. The western corridor out to the Pike, the southern corridors out along Route 1 and 24, and the greater Worcester area as well. As an example of all the modeling that we're doing with heat maps and generating traffic. We expect to have 244 projects with roadway and transit impacts in 2023, all at the same time. So we're always managing multiple projects at the same time. This is just an example of how we're able to do that. Next slide. The northern corridor, which is where this project is, which is generally Charles River and North. In 2023, we'll have North Washington Street Bridge. Micro silica overlay replacement, a lot of the central artery and metropolitan highway system ramps. That's an overlay of concrete ramps that have stalled over the years. Route 28 resurfacing, Ferry Street reconstruction, the Somerville Viaduct. Suffolk Downs, the private development that's going on there that is pretty significant. Then, of course, our Sumner Tunnel. I'd now like to ask Robbie Burgess from Howard Stein Hudson, just to talk about traffic. What our models are showing right now, and he'll go into some detours and I'll be back in a minute.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight. My name is Robbie Burgess from Howard Stein Hudson. I've been working on transportation projects in the Boston area for a little bit more than 20 years now. I prepared the traffic management plan for this project. And I'm going to take a few minutes to go through some of the highlights of the traffic management plan. And also talk about some of the detours. As this slide indicates, the estimate, this is the estimated distribution of trip diversions during the morning and afternoon peaks in the summer of the closure. So walking through this slide here, you can see the bubble towards the top center of the page where it says 19% and 26%. Those are the morning and afternoon diversion ratios that are expected to use Route 16 Revere Beach Parkway to reach points north, south, and west using 90-93. And as we head towards the center of that slide, you can see similarly 34% of the diverted traffic is supposed to, is expected to use the Tobin Bridge in the morning. And then similarly, 31% in the afternoon are expected to use the Tobin Bridge. And then, as we move towards the bottom of the slide, you can see, as you would expect, a larger ratio is going to use the Ted Williams Tunnel. It's the closest, the closest route to the summer to Sumner to get across. And as a result, 45% of trip diversions are expected to use the Ted Williams in the morning peak. And 40% are expected to use the Ted Williams Tunnel in the afternoon peak. And then towards the left of the slide here, you can see in the morning, there's another category, people finding their own way based on where their origin and destinations are. As you would expect. So these diversions are based on a regional traffic model that the DOT has employed on large projects like this. And it uses origin and destination information, route lengths, travel times, and delay to try to estimate where drivers will, which routes drivers will select. So in modeling this project, there were two conditions. There was a condition with the tunnel open, and then a condition with the tunnel closed. And this slide that we're looking at is how all of the traffic is redistributed. So this is where people are going to go when the tunnel is closed. Next slide, please. So how do we support these diversions that are expected on these routes? We have a robust traffic management plan. A few of the items included in it is real time traffic management system, which is providing continuous driver information along detour routes. We will have time to destination data and messaging. So similarly to the sign that's on 1A South that tells you how long it takes to get through the Ted Williams Tunnel. Information like that will be provided to drivers using the detour routes that I will describe in a moment. There will also be real time video monitoring. So there's a lot of cameras at key locations. We'll be proposing additional cameras at key locations so that the DOT is able to monitor traffic and respond to any deficiencies that become apparent. Overloaded left turns or queues that extend into adjacent intersections, items like that where those will become evident to the DOT and to the contractor. We are, excuse me, we're also proposing staff evaluation and monitoring in the field. So the design builder will be required to, upon putting out the detour, to observe it in person, real time, boots on the ground, make sure it's working. It's not, put out the detours and just forget about it. It's real support based traffic management. We're also proposing traffic signal technologies for remote intersection adjustments. These are monitoring units that are installed in traffic signals that allow traffic signal timings to be changed remotely. So similar to the video component of it, the DOT and the design builder will be able to adjust timings to respond to any incidents within the traffic management plan. So you have this remote control of the traffic signals and you have a lot of video feeds. Also, we have a a ton of portable changeable message signs. I think these are most effective way to get message, to get information to drivers are the portable changeable message signs that you see all over the place. So we're proposing those locally, regionally, just so that everybody knows when the tunnel's closing, when the tunnel's open. It's a real robust way to communicate with the public. And also, we're proposing static signage locally and regionally. So your more conventional or traditional highway signage that will reinforce the message to drivers. And it will also act as a backstop in case some of the portable changeable message signs go down. They're battery operated, they're electronics, et cetera. So we have kind of a backup plan to our portable changeable message signs. Next slide, please. So let's get into the detours. We have a few of them. This is the first one, East Boston to downtown. So you can see in green, the Callahan Tunnel is open. You can see in red, the Sumner Tunnel is closed. And at the East Boston portal of the tunnel is where this local detour starts. It starts at Central Square and travels north up Bennington Street to Neptune Street where the detour turns on to Route 1A South into the Ted Williams Tunnel. And then you're able to reach downtown points north, south, and west. Next slide, please. So this slide is a zoomed in component of that detour that we were just looking at. You can see the tunnel in red here. It's kind of that Y shape and the red denotes its closure. This part of the traffic management plan includes some local street detours. London Street to the left of the tunnel and Porter Street, which is coming towards the tunnel from kind of the irregular quadrilateral shaped park that's Central Square towards the tunnel portal there. So these are local closures. Residents are allowed in, service vehicles, and businesses are allowed, business traffic is allowed in. We're just trying to keep vehicles that were destined to the tunnel from getting to the tunnel portal, having to be U-turned around and causing additional congestion. So this is kind of that local level traffic management to try to keep congestion from happening at the tunnel and impacting all the residents. And if you look on towards the top left, you can see that orange arrow and bar. That's the beginning of the Bennington Street detour that I just described. And on the right of the slide here, you can see we've included some of our traffic management equipment, our variable message signs, our static signage, et cetera. So just a snapshot of some of the local level traffic management that this project was proposing. Next slide, please. So this slide, this detour is Revere area to downtown. You can see towards the top center of this slide. Again, another kind of Y-shaped graphic there by Bell Circle. That's the beginning of the detour route where we're starting to deploy signage and messaging to drivers at this early part, coming down 1A South towards Sumner and then diverting into the Ted Williams Tunnel, crossing the harbor, and then to points north, south, and west. Next slide, please. So Logan Airport, of course, very important. The Sumner Tunnel is important to Logan Airport. So we have a couple of detours associated just with Logan Airport. So if you look at this one, Logan is in the top right corner there. And as I, as we looked at other slides, it showed some of our traffic management equipment. And as you can see, in the airport area, we got quite a bit. So we're really trying to present a clear, concise message to drivers. You can see we've got static signage and variable message signs all along the airport, making sure that drivers have the right information and are able to make the the appropriate decision for them to detour. So again, from the airport into the Ted Williams Tunnel and then to points north, south, and west. Next slide, please. This is the final detour, and this is a little bit more zoomed out than the other slides. But it also includes a little bit more of the traffic management or the real time traffic management components that I had mentioned earlier. So this is the Logan Airport to I-93 North proposed detour and the RTTM, the Real Time Traffic Management. So this starts at the airport and towards the bottom center of the slide, it's a pretty narrow purple arrow. And you can see it heads up 1A North to Bell Circle and goes around Bell Circle to Route 16 over the Tobin Bridge and then to 93 North. So this is a very well-signed and very well-messaged detour route. Because what we're trying to do is provide a convenient alternative to the Ted Williams Tunnel for drivers headed towards points north on 93. With the idea of trying to relieve some of the pressure on the Ted Williams Tunnel, take some of the traffic out and give people a convenient, give people an option to get them to their destination. So as this slide shows, we've got a lot of portable traffic sensors. We have closed circuit TV cameras. We've got variable message signs. We've got static signage. So this is kind of that full deployment of the RTTM. And it's my opinion that all of this, that this traffic management plan with all of the technology and all of the signage and all of the outreach can be successful in mitigating the congestion associated with the closure as best as we can. So, so that's my piece on traffic management. I'll turn it back over to Steve now to kind of finish up. Hopefully you had a nice short break, Steve.
Thank you, Robbie. Let's talk about the environmental, cultural resource and community impacts this project has. Lot of words here. It'll take you a minute to go through these. So fundamentally, this project is federally funded. It is on the statewide, it's programmed on the statewide Transportation Improvement Program. The total cost is probably around $135 million in that range. The big cost will be a little lower than that. There are other costs added in. Since it's federally funded, we are subject to the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. And this requires us to evaluate environmental, social, and economic impacts and identify and evaluate reasonable alternatives to the project and feasible impact mitigation measures to those impacts. Community engagement is integral to the NEPA process. Mastod is here listening to you. Your input will be documented and incorporated where feasible. Tonight, we are here to hear your comments on this project, on what we're proposing. We talked about the evaluation that we did on the tunnel. We can continue with maintenance. We don't think that that's reasonable. We think a long-term fix is reasonable, a long-term fix working 24/7 with closures, weekend closures, a 16-week shutdown, and then weekend closures, and then we'll be done. The tunnel will be fixed for decades to come. That doesn't mean we won't have to go in there occasionally to do some things, change a light bulb and whatnot. That'll happen. But overall, we're rehabilitating the arch, we're replacing the ceiling, we're rehabilitating the deck, we're replacing the wall panels, new lighting and new fire safety communications. All of that for weekends, 16-week closure and weekends. This project is also subject to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And this requires us to look at historic properties that are either listed in the National Register of Historic Places or eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And we have found that the portals, at the portals of the tunnel, at the entrance and exit, there are these murals with angels' wings on granite. Those are historic. We are going to take those, remove them from the project site offsite. We're going to restore them to their original grandeur and then remount them all within I for historic preservation. So. Next slide, please. What, aside from traffic, and we talked, Robbie talked about the detours that we're proposing. And we talked about the duration, how quickly we want to get this work. Are there other concerns? Sure. Dust, noise, vibration, and rodents are always concerns in the Boston urban area, in an area like this. We are requiring our design build team, again, the project's not completely designed and we're putting out the contracts for them to finish the design and start construction. Before they start anything, they have to submit a dust control plan, a noise control plan, a vibration plan, and a rodent control program. All of this is required. And we will also have a contact if either noise, dust, vibration, or rodents get out of hand, out of concern. We will have a line that you can call for someone to address right away. That said, we know that construction has impacts. There's no doubt to it. I want to talk about dust. If you have a large earth embankment and we're moving dirt around with mud on tires, you can generally anticipate a lot of dust. In this project, the bulk of the work is contained within the tunnel. Some work is on the portals and the dust that will be created, and there will be dust created. But it will be from saw cutting and removing the concrete that's got to be removed from there. It's not from moving earth around. So it's a different kind of dust. The noise that will come from there will be from saws and jackhammers removing that concrete. Vibration, there are generally two types of vibration that can occur. One is a vibration that'll shake your foundation. And we will put seismographs in certain receptors to make sure that that doesn't happen. The type of work that we're doing will not impact any foundations. We already know that. Where, you know, a pneumatic drill, a saw cutting, those aren't going to shake a foundation. That said, in some cases, there will be vibration that's noticeable. And again, we will monitor those vibrations as well as nuisance vibration. And of course, a rodent control program we need on any project such as this. Next slide. What community concerns do we know? Well, public safety and who have we chatted with? Boston Fire Department, Police Emergency Services. We have an ongoing discussion on this project and we're looking at the design of the tunnel. Where we are now, how can we improve it? And then during construction, what can we do to help emergency services and emergency responders during construction? For traffic diversions and delays, we're working with Boston Transportation Department. We're coordinating with the GPS mapping services. That said, we can't control what the mapping services say and where they tell people to go. We can't control that. But we can give them the signed detour routes that we're planning. And as Robbie showed you, we're not planning on detoring anyone onto a local road. Our affected eight sister agencies at Massport and DCR, and of course, the MBTA, we're in constant contact with. And as Robbie discussed earlier, we have a real time traffic management system where we'll be able to control signals along the detour route remotely so that we can adjust rate and green time accordingly. Next slide, please. How will we keep you informed? So as the schedule, the schedule dictates how we close the project. And that is to do that amount of work, the ceiling, the deck, the arch, the walls, the fire safety equipment. We need weekends, we need a closure, and then we need weekends. That's fairly fixed in order to do that amount of work. But we'd like to hear from you, you know, constructing activities during overnight hours. How are our detour routes, options for directional signage and public outreach? Are we reaching out? How did you, did you get here? Okay, did you hear about this project enough from us? Should we talk to other people? That's, we want feedback. Next slide, please. Key stakeholders that we're reaching out to, abutted residents and property owners. We've done some leaflets, we've done some direct mail, area residents, as we reach out, business and economic development groups. We've already gone to some of the larger ones, community groups and organizations we have reached out to and will continue to, commuters, Boston Logan Airport, travelers. You know, we're going to meet with the rental car agencies. We've already, of course, met with Massport. We haven't met with the rental car agencies yet, but that's on our to-do list. Elected officials, Massport and other government agencies, as I just discussed, public safety and emergency response services, transportation groups. Are we missing anyone during the comment period? Let us know. Next slide, please. So as of spring of '21, as of where we are now, we have hosted virtual, all of our meetings have been virtual as this one is. Thus far, we've had legislative briefings, stakeholder and community group meetings, public information meetings, and today is our first hearing and virtual open houses. For direct outreach, we have mail to the butters. We've had informational posters. We've emailed EZ Pass holders, Logan Express. We have had direct outreach, pardon what I just said a moment ago. We have had direct outreach to rental car agencies, outreach to community groups, large businesses and neighborhood pop-ups as I described earlier. We're providing information through our website. We'll give you the link to the website if you don't already have it at the end. Emails, Mastod, social media, our Twitter account, press briefings, press releases, radio. Radio has picked up several of our public information meetings already. Next slide. Next steps for the end of May and into June. We've had this design public hearing, you know, continue to be community pop-ups. And we'll provide more details and gather input on the construction plans and detours as we develop them further. You know, we're still over a year away before any construction begins. We're in the early stages of this. Again, the closure, the 16-week closure is roughly Memorial Day to Labor Day of '23. It'll extend a little bit beyond that because it's 16 weeks. But Memorial Day to Labor Day of '23 is the full closure. Next month, we'll have some more community pop-ups. We're looking to have another public information meeting, a virtual open house. And we'll brief community groups as requested. We're looking forward to talk to anyone about this project. Next slide, please. So during construction, this is all pre-construction. During construction, again, we'll have legislative briefings, town official briefings, stakeholder briefings, public meetings, open houses. These may start to be person-to-person. Wouldn't that be nice? Instead of virtual, we'll see as time tells, as time dictates. Hopefully, we'll all be able to interact person-to-person more than we have been. Mails, mailings to the butters, informational posters, everything that we just talked about that we have done, we're going to continue to do and more prior to and during construction. Next slide, please. Please stay involved. Our website is Sumner Tunnel Restoration Project. And you can email us at sumner100@dotdotstate dot ma dot us. And let's have comment and any questions that you have, we will do our best to answer. Great, Chris?
Thank you, Steve. So a few instructions as to how to ask a question. So you can either click the raise your hand button, which is the icon on the left. I'll then call on you and then unmute you in the order that's received. You can also submit your questions or comments via the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen or the chat feature as well. Kindly, please state your name for your question. And we do ask that you only share one question or comment at a time, limited to two minutes to allow others to participate. If you are dialing in, you can dial star nine and I will call out the last four digits of your phone number. And I will unmute you when it's your turn. A few other comments as well for our Spanish and Arabic interpretation audio channels. Susanna, Nadi, if there are any questions on your end, you can chat them to me. And then I will read those aloud. A few notes as well, I did quickly scan through the participants tab. And we welcome Senator Joan Lovely, thank you for joining us, as well as Revere City Councilor Ira Dobleselsky. So if I missed you, please let me know, sorry. But we will now open the Q and A. Also, my colleague LaShania Thomas from Mastod will be assisting in the facilitation of these questions and comments. So with that, please either type in a question or raise your hand. Actually, our first raised hand is from Councilor Dobleselsky. Councilor, I'm unmuting you now.
Thank you, gentlemen. Nice to see you all again. I was at the last meeting and I did make some recommendations. And I'm glad Chris checked on things on the visual signage southbound on Route 1 through Sargass and Revere. But my, looking at the diversions coming out of Logan Airport, I'm a little concerned about sending traffic up through Bell Circle and Revere, Mahoney Circles, most people may know it. That is probably the worst rotary in the state. And I'd like to know what is going to happen as far as what you're going to do to adjust the traffic flow up there. We have five entries into that circle. And right now, even without this redirection of traffic, it's very bad there. I know they've tried to do some things with signalization and, but right now it's not working. I'm just very, very, very concerned about the amount of traffic coming through Bell Circle and the gridlock that it's going to occur during that time. That is, I'm a district councilor of Ward 2 in Revere. And that is right in the middle of my neighborhood. So I see what goes on every day at every time of the day. So I have a severe concern about that reroute coming out of Logan into Bell Circle. So I have a severe concern about that reroute coming out of Logan into Bell Circle. If you can address that and see what we can do about it, I'd appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. That's something we will drill down and look at the specific impacts that we expect really during the peak travel times. And we will get back to you on what we're finding. What we do know is frankly, there's only so many places to send vehicles. But if the impacts are so great, we'll see what mitigation we can provide as necessary. So we'll drill down into Bell Circle for peak hour.
Thank you, Steve. We have a question from Fernanda, Fernando Ramirez. Says, will the Tobin Bridge prepares be completed before this project starts?
That's our intent.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, next is a raised hand from Saritha. Saritha, I'm unmuting you now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Saritha Ramakrishna. I'm a policy analyst at Conservation Law Foundation and we're longtime advocates for transportation justice. We only recently became aware of this proposed construction project and do hope to see robust public engagement, not only tonight, but in the months leading up to the construction. The tunnel reconstruction involves upgrades to repair the nearly 90 year old tunnel, traffic rerouting and full closure for several months. We do urge Mastod to move forward with the project, consider environmental justice when rerouting traffic and apply a robust set of mitigation measures. So considering environmental justice, the Sumner Tunnel carries drivers between East Boston, near the airport and the Haymarket area of Boston. The East Boston entrance is located in the heart of a state designated environmental justice population that is subject to air pollution from congested highways, Logan Airport and industrial activity. Every state action related to environmental justice populations burdened by air pollution should avoid added air pollution and involve action to redress the longstanding harm by improving air quality. Further, the new roadmap law enacted in March requires Mastod to consider the impact of its decisions on environmental justice populations and work to reduce environmental burdens and maximize environmental benefits for these communities. Recent construction projects have demonstrated a lack of regard for impacts to environmental justice populations. For example, the Tobin Bridge construction project resulted in routine visible dust for nearby residents. So it's imperative that this project avoid construction vehicles that contribute to poor air quality in East Boston. Second, CLF urges Mastod to ensure that the traffic rerouting does not affect the Tobin Bridge bus lane pilot. We're pleased to have entered into a settlement agreement last November with Mastod that established a southbound Tobin Bridge bus lane. That settlement agreement arose from the planned traffic rerouting from Route 1 and the Tobin Bridge to 93 and the associated elimination of the high occupancy vehicle lane there. We are concerned that the Sumner Tunnel reconstruction will result in rerouted traffic from Route 1A to Route 1 and the Tobin Bridge that will result in more traffic on the Tobin Bridge. And that increased traffic should not be a reason to discontinue the Tobin Bridge bus lane, which is currently benefiting Chelsea residents and workers by reducing bus trip times and causing people to choose the bus over cars, which is overall reducing air pollution. It's a great example of Mastod prioritizing bus riders and environmental justice populations. And we're hoping to see additional actions that will do more of the same. Third, the Sumner Tunnel restoration will require mitigation measures specifically for East Boston residents and other nearby communities such as Chelsea. And we recommend the following mitigation measures. At least four months prior to the closure of the Sumner Tunnel and throughout the duration of the construction, suspend fare collection on the blue line and supporting bus lines. These temporary no cost transit fares for getting people on the blue line at certain stations and certain East Boston bus stops will maximize alternative transportation options for impacted residents. Work with the residents and community based organizations to develop rerouting plans that minimize additional traffic on local roads. Work with Massport to reopen all Logan Express operations at reduced fares and open the North Station location. And prior to implementing the closure, closure, Mastod and the city should implement a traffic management system to keep Route 1A traffic on 1A. And finally, work with community based organizations, elected officials and Massport to implement bus rapid transit or bus lanes to reduce travel time along downtown bound MBTA and Logan Express bus routes. Thanks so much for taking these comments. My colleague Stacy Rubin, who's a senior attorney with CLF, is eager to continue the discussion with Mastod staff. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your comment. I really appreciate it and we'll drill down into them again. Thank you.
LaShania.
I don't have any question or comment right now. The one that we just presented to Steve from Fernando Ramirez has already been answered.
Okay, so in that I will unmute Jackson Hurst. Jackson, I'm unmuting you now. It seems I'm having, Jackson, can you hear me? Seems you're having a technical difficulties unmuting Jackson. Let me try unmuting Olivia Nichols.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Olivia Nichols with the Environmental Justice Organization Greenroots, which is based in Chelsea and East Boston. And I'd just like to highlight some key concerns, including the public engagement process of this project as well as mitigation measures for residents of East Boston and Chelsea relating to air quality and public transportation. First, I'd like to ask for more information from Mastod on the timeline for public engagement in the months leading up to construction. As there are no future meetings beyond tonight's hearing listed on Mastod's website. I'd also like to ask when and how comments given at this hearing will inform decisions still to be made, including, for example, the proposed detours. In terms of mitigation, we do not believe that providing signage is enough. Mastod should be cognizant of the fact that East Boston and Chelsea are environmental justice communities that have long been burdened with disproportionate shares of the region's most extreme negative transportation impacts. Air quality is already poor, especially in the summer. And the reality is that people will cut through local roads in East Boston and Chelsea during this project. Added traffic congestion will further worsen pollution. So therefore, air monitoring and other air pollution mitigation mechanisms for impacted residents must be considered. And lastly, we believe that traffic rerouting should not only involve detours for cars, but that Mastod should use this opportunity to promote public transportation as getting people out of cars. With that, we recommend that at least four months prior to the closure of the Sumner Tunnel and throughout the duration of construction, that fare collection on the blue line and supporting bus lines be suspended. These temporary no cost transit fares will maximize alternative transportation options for impacted residents. And thank you again for receiving these comments and I look forward to continuing to engage. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments and we will engage further to be clear.
LaShania, anything on your end?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Jackson, solving issues, unmuting you. So actually, maybe try entering it in the Q and A box and LaShania can read your question out. Next, I will try to unmute Kathy Henriquez. Kathy, I'm unmuting you now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm a resident of Eastie. I live here in London Street, right in front of the Summer Tunnel. So this is a bit concerning because last construction where they were taking out the toll booths. I remember like at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, like my apartment vibrating and like the, it was just not something that I would like to experience again. So this is not a question, it's more of a request that if there will be any loud noises or like you said, there probably won't be a lot of vibrations, but if there are, if they can be done during the day or scheduled to be done during the day rather than at night, because it can be very disturbing. Now, my question is, where will the workers be coming from? I know that you're talking about being in the process of interviewing contractors. So can you please advocate that those contractors hire local workers instead of bringing workers from out of state or workers from different towns that are not nearby?
So there's a lot of comments there, all reasonable and questions that I will answer to the best of my ability. Certainly with construction impacts, there will be some. And we will try to schedule the impacts at the portals during daytime hours and not at nighttime hours, as you can imagine. We're also on the vehicles themselves, the backup noises. We're having them set at the minimum level allowable so that it's not just a blanket no one pays attention to. They'll be at the most minimal level allowable. So we are going to do everything we can to minimize noise and vibration to the extent that we are able to recognizing that we're removing concrete. And sometimes that has a loud, it's loud work that sometimes we will do our best to mitigate. As far as the workers, we don't have a specific provision nor can we for a Boston only labor force. They are able to use a wider range for a labor force. We can't have a Boston only one. So.
Thank you, Steve. But we have a question from Counselor. Will Tobin Bridge tolls be fees stopped during the closure of the tunnel?
It's a question that's been asked a couple of times and we're looking at what type of relief we can provide if we're able to for certain residents, certain communities.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, next I'll be unmuting Fawaz. Fawaz, I'm unmuting you now.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for all the work you do, first of all, just a fast concern about the MBTA, mainly the buses. Because it always before, you know, now it's all going in one direction and the time to get to work and all these things. Now is there going to be like new routes for the area close to the tunnel in the opposite direction? And go around the routing or how is that going to work? Is there an idea yet or this is too early of a discussion about it?
So we have identified four bus routes that are, one actually goes through the tunnel and then the other three are on the detour routes that were assigned. And we're looking at those, we're looking at the headway now to see what we can do, what adjustments to make. It's a little premature now to talk about what specific we can do, but they're definitely on our radar screen. The, I think it's the 450 is the one that goes through the tunnel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Here's a question from Counselor again, will that include Revere residents?
We don't have anything definitive yet for the, I'm assuming he's pertaining to the Tobin on relief for the toll. We don't have a specific area in mind. It's something that we're looking.
There's another question, comment from S E Ross. There is an automated gate owned by Massport at the end of Maverick Street in East Boston that provides convenient access for drivers in the Jeffries Point neighborhood of East Boston to access the Ted Williams Tunnel. Has there been any consideration to keeping this gate open during the tunnel closure?
It has come up at another public information meeting and thank you for bringing it up. It's something that I raised it with Massport and it's something that we are looking into. I can't say where we'll end up. What I can say is there are some areas, and if you think about an interstate highway that has a U-turn available for state police to make a U-turn. State police have cars that have beefed up engines in them. They have blue lights and they have professional drivers and they're licensed and allowed to make that U-turn where the average person might be able to, but in some cases, it's not what we encourage and we don't want it. And that's why it's illegal, because the road isn't designed for it, for a U-turn like that on an interstate. This ramp access might have similar geometric issues that are similar to that. And that's nothing that we want to encourage or allow. So that's one of the things that we're looking at before opening it up to a broader use.
Thank you, Steve.
There are no other raised hands at current on my end. So certainly, as Steve noted, comment will be open. So the project email address, website and signup registration form are all currently in the chat. Jackson, let me try to unmute you again. Yeah, still, still having issues, Jackson. So if you, if you wouldn't mind, if you could just type your question in, Jackson, in the Q and A or the chat and LaShania can read that out. While we are awaiting Jackson to type his question in, as I recognized in the beginning, Senator Joan Lovely is on the meeting. And then Senator, I will unmute you, like to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you for the presentation. I'm on tonight to view this for constituents and myself actually, who come in and out of the Sumner Tunnel. I will tell you, the condition of that tunnel is dangerous and I'm very pleased that it's going to be upgraded. When I drive through that tunnel, especially when I get in maybe to the 10 or 15 second mark, the condition of the roadway, I feel like I'm going to ping pong off the walls. So thank you. It's, it will be inconvenient for our commuters that are coming in 1A, but in the interest of public safety, it's absolutely necessary and we'll find our way into Boston. And so I just want to say thank you for, for these upgrades. From a grateful driver that's coming in to access the State House, it's just not safe right now. So I look forward to the repairs, we'll get through the year and it'll be beautiful in the end and safe. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. LaShania, any more questions on your end?
No, I think we're all set, Chris. Thank you.
Okay, a few notes. So as I, as I just stated, but to reiterate again, to sign up for project updates and alerts to our subscriber database that is growing by the day, if you could visit the link in your chat and just fill that form out. Secondarily, we certainly, you know, we're a year away from starting construction, as was noted in the presentation. And certainly, this has all just been the beginning of our public outreach and we plan to be engaging the public heavily, not just in the, at the time up until construction, but certainly through construction as well. Thank you to our two interpreters, Nadi and Susanna, very much appreciated. And thank you to the Senator again and Counselor Noble Selsky for joining us this evening. And with that, I will put it back to Steve. Steve?
I just want to recap for a series of weekends followed by a 16 week full closure, followed by a smaller series of weekends will give us the time to work 24/7 to do necessary rehabilitation to the tunnel. And that's the arch, the ceiling, the deck, the walls and all the safety equipment as well. It's necessary, it'll allow us to keep the tunnel in good repair for many decades to come. We want to get this done once and by doing it this way, the impacts to all of the users are minimized by allowing us to work 24/7 using rapid construction techniques that have a high quality and a high duration. So with that. with that, thank you all for your comments. We will be looking into every one of them.
And, and with one final note, Steve, that I, that I missed. Post-meeting, you will be receiving a survey, survey on outreach and engagement leading up to this public meeting as well as the content that was presented. We do kindly ask that you take, you know, two, three minutes and complete that just to, you know, help better apprise us on, on how we can, how we can improve and how we can be better. So thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.